All right. Well, welcome, everybody. My name is Justin Smith. I'm the Managing Director of St. Leadership Academy. For those who are new to ALA community, that's my role here. And we're happy to have the Town Hall meeting tonight to talk about returning to school. Ideally, we'd be in a situation to where we'd be talking about open house and letting you in the classrooms and meet your teachers under traditional circumstances. But that's not where we are right now in 2020. But that does not mean that we don't want to provide the same type of learning opportunities and provide the same culture and climate that we pride ourselves on. So tonight, we have a panel here that's joining me that's going to help lead this Town Hall meeting. And I will introduce them quickly. I'll just go by who was on my screen. So first, we have Damian Perez here, who is on our admin team as well. You might have known him a lot of you from teaching science for us for the first two years here. But now, Mr. Perez is taking on an admin role for us and helping us with a lot of procedures when it comes to facilities and things like that. So he has kind of a dual responsibility. He's teaching some high school science, but he's also on the admin team. I'm pretty sure everybody knows Ashley Thompson here, who is the face of ALA, is what I like to say, who everybody sees when they first come in. Ashley is our office manager. It's kind of the title that we give her, but everybody knows that she does a lot more than manage the office. But she is here also. Dr. Dennis Jett, who is our high school principal. She was our academic dean last year, and our organizational structure has changed slightly so that she's moving to the high school building and will be the building principal at the high school. And our newest face is Mr. Jeffrey Witt, who is our middle school principal. And he will be the building principal for the middle school, started in July with us. And he'll be able to introduce himself when he talks about the middle school and what that looks like. So you can meet him and learn about his background. So we'll get started. We're right here at six o'clock. We're going to try to keep it to an hour and make sure that we give you the information you need, but also be succinct about it and make sure that we're respecting of your time. I do want to say this before I go also, is that Ashley here is managing the chat room, and she will be taking questions from there. So if you have a question, obviously, you can't unmute yourself as a participant. You can just hear us and view the presentation. But if you have a question at any point, you can put it in the chat. Ashley's going to kind of monitor it. At the end, we will take the questions and try to answer them the best that we can so we can fulfill the Town Hall meeting format that we prescribe to. Okay? All right. So the objectives and the agenda for today, we're going to review the data. Thank you for so many of you for actually doing the surveys and completing the surveys for us online. I know that a lot of it was tedious, and we had a lot of surveys, is what I mean to say. But we need that data because we need state order input. So we're going to review that, look over that. And then we're also going to go over the return to school plan, kind of give you an idea of what that looks like, and talk about specifics, the timeline. We'll go through. We'll talk about remote and blended instruction, some specifics about that. We'll kind of talk about the health and safety protocols that we'll have in place once students do come back to campus. And then at the end, we will take questions. And again, if you have those questions, your job is to put them in the chat. And then we'll get to them at the end of the session. Hopefully, we'll answer a lot of them as we go. But if there's ones that we missed, then make sure that you put them in the chat, and Ashley will collect those. So the first thing I wanted to look at was some of our data. As you know, we sent out a survey about blended and remote learning recently, within the last month. And obviously, we're making decisions like this. They are tough. There's no correct answer, as a lot of us are finding out that are in education. You kind of have to do what's best for your community. So we wanted to make sure that we took the information that you gave us to make an educated decision about what direction we would go in. So as you can see there, when we did the family survey, we had almost 36% of our students or families choose the remote learning option. And then 64.2% chose the blended learning option. It was their preference between the two. Remote learning would be Plan C, and blended learning would be Plan B. And as we know, Governor Cooper has given the schools the opportunity to choose between those two plans for opening the school year. So that's why we took that data out. And that's what the data showed us there. And then when we talked about a delayed opening was another part of that survey's question. 88.5% of the families supported that and understood. Maybe not necessarily agreed, but would support a delayed opening of some sort. I think we put 30 days or a month in there for the delay. And you can see how that percentage broke down. 88.5% supported it. And then 11.5% had reservations about that delay. We also took into account our teachers. I think we talked to teachers today. We had a meeting with teachers earlier today at 1:00 to talk to them about the plan, to give them the information. And it's definitely important to the admin team, everybody that's here on the panel with you. It's definitely important to us to consider the teachers, how they feel comfortable, what they feel safe with and comfortable with. Because they're a huge piece of this process, and they make the engine of our school go. So a lot of, as you can see, 11 have concerns about students returning immediately. Three have no concerns. And then six have concerns about students and colleagues returning. So took that information, took the data from US families. And then we also, what I did not say at the beginning, is we also had a return to school committee that has been working since, goodness, June, if I'm not mistaken, early June, putting together a lot of these plans that you see, a lot of the documents that you've seen. And we've been talking about this data and talking about teacher concerns, student concerns, what's the most effective way to come back to school safely, but also effectively. So that's the data that we wanted to share with you from the surveys. It's important that you know that because we definitely took that into consideration when making decisions about coming back to school and what that looks like. So yeah, the data was definitely at the forefront. We definitely wanted to hear from you. Definitely were heard. And we looked at the comments. I know Mr. Witt went through every single comment, and we did some analysis of the data to break it down so that we could see really what the community was wanting. I mean, I think everybody wants everything to go back to normal. Me being one of those people would definitely love to welcome all of your children back immediately. But in order to be safe, in order to be in line with government and the recommendations from the Health and Human Services, Oklahoma Health and Human Services, we have to adjust and differentiate how we come back to school. So I wanted to talk to you briefly about some of the factors that we considered when making the decision. Again, it was not an easy one. Had to take the best situation for us as a community. But number one, first and foremost, which will always be first and foremost for us at ALA, is the health and safety of students and staff. So could we establish protocols to keep people safe and distanced? Could we put things in place to make sure that we can ensure, not ensure, but prevent as much as possible an outbreak of any sorts on our campus? And those type of things, that's paramount for me and for this admin team, is keeping students and staff healthy and safe. So obviously, that's at the forefront of when we made the decision. What can we do to be most effective in making sure that people were safe, students and staff were safe when they came on campus? The second thing was the ability to deliver quality instruction. When we looked at the data from, I think, the first survey that went back in June, talked about the spring, when we first initially got out due to COVID-19, some of the concerns that you had as parents and as community members about the instruction. And I think a lot of it was the quality, the inconsistencies, some of those things that happened as a result of us shifting, basically, over a weekend to remote instruction for the rest of the school year. So we really, at the forefront of our thought process really is how can we ensure quality instruction while at the same time keeping everyone safe and healthy? So we definitely wanted to have a remote option for our families. It was made loud and clear to us that our families wanted a full remote option for those of you who wanted to keep their children at home. So we wanted to offer that. But we also had, as you could see, a large contingency of people who wanted in-person instruction. And we had to take that into consideration, too. One thing that's different about ALA, and I think something that's good about ALA is a positive, is that, yeah, we're a small school. We're a community school. This year, we'll have about 40 staff members, both full and part-time. And it's different from a district school. District schools have thousands of employees. Lee County and Harton County have thousands of employees. And I know that a lot of them are going to remote academies or virtual academies that they're creating with some of their personnel. And they're shifting some personnel to that academy, some personnel to in-person. For ALA, and we'll talk about when we get to human resources for ALA, our staff is our staff. And for us, we don't see that as a negative. We see it as a positive, something that makes us unique. We're able to give personal and a community feel to our school. But it does limit us in the sense that we can't divide up our staff and have a virtual academy here and then have in-person instruction here. We wanted to create, we have to create an environment where our teachers are teaching both remotely, our remote students who are choosing to stay at home, and the students who are planning to come onto campus. So with that being said, we had to consider that. And how can we do both of those with fidelity and have high-quality instruction for the students who choose to stay home and those that choose to come into school? So that was at the forefront in this decision. Facility resources is another factor, the way our facility is set up. And a lot of you know that. Our new building is pretty much done and very, very close to being completed. We're set to take occupancy of it next week if everything continues according to plan. We'll be in there next week. I know Dr. Jett will be happy about that to start getting things set up there. But that's a factor. We have to have time to get the new building set up, to get all the protocols and the distancing things in place. Once we take possession, to get furniture and so on and so forth, which we will do. But also, the size of our classrooms in the middle school. Had to look at the size, how many students we can get in there and still distance six feet, and look at things like that to make a determination about how many students we can safely accept onto campus without there being any issues as far as them interacting or being exposed to the virus if there was somebody to have it on campus. And the last thing is ALA human resources. We want to be able to train our staff. We want to be able to give them the resources they need to effectively serve your children. And part of our decision was, how can we methodically do that? How can we create a process to where we can do that in a way that's effective? We have this certain amount of staff. We need to get them trained on remote instruction. I told them today, everybody's almost, it's almost like everybody's going to be a new teacher because it's paradigm shift that we have to make in going from traditional teaching to remote instruction is something that nobody has experienced before. I mean, on our admin team, we have, goodness, several years of experience, and none of us have seen anything like this. But with that being said, we definitely can adjust. We definitely can provide quality instruction. But we need the time to get it right and to get our focus on what we need to get it on and do it in a process, in a methodical process to where we're getting remote instruction correct, and then we're bringing students back. We're having the protocols in place to make sure that it's effective and efficient. So those are all the things that went into consideration. I know that was a long time on that, but it's important for you to understand that these are all the things that went into consideration when we made our decision, which was not a decision that was made lightly. So the timeline, a lot of you have seen it and maybe have in the communications that I've given you. And I kind of apologize for inundating you with emails, but I don't really, because I want to make sure that you have the information that you need because I know it's a trying time, and you're trying to get all the information to decide what you want to do with your children. So we want to make sure you have the information you need. But I want to go through the timeline very quickly for you, give you an idea of where we are right now and the proposal that I'll make to our board. So one thing that we want to do, and one thing that we can do as a small charter school of about 400 students, is provide orientation to all of our families. So what we are planning right now is bringing our teachers back a little bit early, to have given their initial training for the beginning of the school year. And then that will free them up for the week of August 17th through the 21st to be able to make individual meetings with every single family in their advisory classes. So each teacher has an advisory class. For the most part, each teacher has an advisory class. And they will communicate and connect with each family of the students in their advisory class to set up an orientation where they will individually, either virtually or in person, go over remote instruction, blended instruction, the expectations, the schedule, what kids need, what they, give them their device, do those type of things. And then they will introduce themselves to you as parents. And then they will address any needs that you may have for your child in this remote or blended environment. So instead of us starting on August 17th, we decided, hey, why don't we take some time during that week and just spend time getting our families into the building or virtually, the resume or hangout meet, to talk to them about what we're doing, set expectations, and allow community members or family members to talk to their teachers about the plan so that everybody understands what the process is and those lines of communication are open. So that's what we're going to do from August 17th to the 21st. There'll be sign-up times. We're going to have times in the evening, in lieu of not having a traditional open house. We'll have times in the evening, probably from 5:00 to 7:00 or something like that, to where you can schedule a time if you're working with your child's advisory teacher to talk to them directly about your child, what's going on with remote and blended learning, and get you the information that you need. We plan to have our first day of school on August 24th. And then from August 24th through September 11th, which is the first three weeks of school, if I'm not mistaken, we'll operate in Plan C, which is full remote learning. No students will be on campus. And again, our goal with this is to establish our remote learning program. Again, we're going to have, it looks like 35% of our students full remote every day. We have an obligation to serve them and the students who want to be on campus. But once we talk about the daily schedule, you'll see that the remote schedule and the in-person schedule are the same, essentially, because we want to serve both cohorts of students at the same time and give them the same quality instruction. So from August 24th to September 11th, everybody will be remote. You'll come online, students will come online on the schedule that we'll talk about or the building principals will talk about shortly. And then we'll go through that process. Students will know what time they need to be on. They'll know what resources they need. They'll understand how remote learning works because the other factor is that Governor Cooper could send us into Plan C at any time. We want to make sure we're prepared for that. We want to make sure we have everything in place, that we have that going. And then if things are status quo, we'll bring students back on September 14th. We are going to give you a deadline of September 4th to commit your child for full remote learning or for blended learning for the first quarter by September 4th. So you'll have an opportunity to see kind of how remote instruction is going. You'll have the opportunity to kind of see how your student's doing. You'll see how the format, how it's working. And then you'll be able to make that decision. If you know what you're going to choose, we'll have the registration form out probably, goodness, the week of August 17th. Once we start having those orientations, so you can choose. But September 4th, you'll have to decide for the first quarter. And then once the first quarter is over, which is October 23rd, you'll have the opportunity to reassess, choose to stay remote or choose to go blended depending on your family situation. And then September 14th, as of right now, our plan is to move to Plan B, blended learning option, where students are on campus and some are remote, some are on campus on a rotating schedule. All right. So what does remote learning look like? Well, obviously, all students receive instruction remotely. No students are on campus. And this is what we're going to be in the first three weeks of school. Teachers will use module instruction within Canvas. You'll hear about Canvas a lot in the future. And you'll hear about module instruction a lot. And basically, to sum it up, module instruction is basically where you create a group of assignments that are directly connected to a unit or subject area or standard or whatever it may be in the class. And the course is built in Canvas, and students kind of follow through checking off assignments as they go, and they build towards a larger learning objective. So you'll hear more about it. I don't got to go into too much detail into it. But essentially, in Canvas, it'll be set up. What we'll do is we'll have a demo for you going, a videos or things like that, so you can kind of see it and gives you some training in Canvas specifically. But module instruction is how students will receive instruction in remote and blended learning. Every student will be issued an electronic device. We know that middle schools get iPads. Our high schools will get a combination between the Chromebooks and the MacBook Airs. And then students will participate in virtual instruction from 9:00 to 3:00 with breaks and teacher office hours throughout. And the teacher workday is 8:00 to 3:30. And you can see where their office hours are. What's very important about all this, and I think my principals will back me up and the admin team will back me up, is that this is going to be very different from the spring. All right, I'm going to say that again. I'm going to pause and say it again. So all that you parents can hear it, and the students who are listening can hear it also. Grading and attendance are going to be very different this fall than it was in the spring. Spring was kind of a whirlwind. Everybody knows that. It's over. We've had the whole summer to plan. I don't think any of us have really had vacation. We've been working on it since, basically, May, this return to school plan. So all the excuses, we're going to try to eliminate all of the barriers to remote instruction. We're going to try to eliminate grading. Everything will count the same as in traditional instruction. Students will be held accountable for their progress. We're going to have interventions in place for students. Grades will count no more of the PC-19 or WC-19. None of that will take place. Students will receive grades as normal. Attendance will be taken daily. You'll get the phone calls from our robo calls. If your child is not online, we have interventions in place from our principals and our team to where if a student is not attending remotely or participating in activities, then we have interventions in place where we are going to try to track them down and get them engaged in the learning activities. So I'm going to say it one more time because it's important for me, this is one of the important things for me. It will be very different as far as grading goes and attendance. Everything is going to count. We have a good plan in place, and teachers are going to hold students accountable. If there are barriers, we're going to try to meet them and then make sure that we have equitable we have equitable access to learning across the board. So that's very, very important for me to say. Blended is very similar to instructionally to remote. So all that is true that I just said, grading attendance will be the same as remote. Everything's going to count, blended grades, good grades, the report cards, and so on and so forth. What's important about us is that what we're basing our blended model on when students return to school is based on building occupancy. So our middle school classrooms can hold eight to 10 students in fulfilling the distancing requirements of six feet. So we've actually gone through, measured, put desks in there. All of our students will in all of our classrooms. We're not going to have any tables. We're going to have all individual desks. And we're going to place them six feet apart, make sure that they're distanced. So for that, our building occupancy is 110 students for the middle school, 70 for the high school. And our high school classrooms are a little bit bigger so they can do about 10 students per classroom. And that's how we're going to base our blended learning model. As of right now, if things hold with our numbers, we'll do an A-day, B-day option where we divide the groups. We divide all of our students that want to come on campus into two different groups. And then Group A will come on Mondays and Wednesdays. Group B will come on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We will clean in between every day. We have a professional cleaning company that we're contracting with that's going to come through and clean and sanitize after every day. And then on Fridays, everybody is remote. So let me say that again. We'll have a Group A that comes on Mondays and Wednesdays, a Group B that comes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the groups that are not on campus will still be able to access instruction remotely. So even if they're not on campus, and let's say they're a part of Group A, they come on Monday, they're at home on Tuesday, but they'll still be able to do kind of like what we're doing right now, access their teacher, get the same instruction. They're just doing it from home because we'll still have a group of students who will be doing it remotely from home anyway because they choose to stay at home.[1510.44] And then we'll have the students who do blended who will stay at home. Um and then we'll have the students in the building and they'll all be getting the same instruction. From the teacher um simultaneously uh and also be getting the same assignments in Canvas. Um from the same teacher uh in the different subject areas. We will are gonna try to have siblings attend on the campus on the same days. Um so I I don't know, we don't have a definitive way of how we're going to de- divide the cohorts at this point. I know there's a lot of factors. We're all gonna try to keep, we are going to keep siblings together. Um and then it will likely be either by your last name. Or some kind of combination uh objective way to divide students uh for who will be on campus. And who will not or or the or the groups once we get to that point.
Mr.
Yes.
As you're talking about this, we had a parent ask if we could be more flexible with our hours than nine to three. I explained to her that we're trying to provide a consistent schedule that'll kind of easily flow into the blended learning as well. Can you elaborate as to why we're doing the nine to three?
Yeah, so so we're actually gonna get to that with the building principles, talking about the daily schedule. I will say this is that, you know, we do have a responsibility uh when it comes to instruction and 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 being in front of students. A lot of what the students will be doing will be within the modules in Canvas. Um and the nine to three is is the set standard and we want kids online. But the bulk of the instruction will be in the modules. Teachers will be be facilitating that instruction. Uh with their online or virtual face-to-face um instruction. We did wanna give teachers. Um you know, a significant amount of time uh to to interact with students. We've talked a lot about and the building principals will do, we'll talk about this. I've talked a lot about how to organize that time. So it's not like they're just listening, kind of like what we're doing now. It's not like they're just listening to somebody talk. Um it'll be differentiated and it'll it'll be broken up. Uh a lot of modalities of instruction will be used, so. Um it it yeah, it's a it's a it's a while. It's a it's a good amount of of a day, but we've worked in breaks for them. Um as well. Um so I think once we get in and do it, it 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 we'll see how it works. And 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 you'll feel a little bit more comfortable with that nine to three day. Alright, alright, so I'll introduce introduce Mr. Witt here. Uh he can come in and talk a little bit about middle school instruction. Um and then talk about the daily schedule, Mr. Witt. Once you're ready for me to change slides, you can just let me know.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um I wanna say I'm very much looking forward to this year. Um I'm coming to you with twenty-four years' experience, uh twenty of those as an educator in the school systems. Um most recently in Durham Public Schools. And I have been an administrator, uh a principal for the past four years. And I'm looking very forward to joining ALA. Um I am married to my wonderful wife Lisa and we have five boys. Um ranging from age thirty-three to nineteen, so hopefully the the student ages are getting a little bit. Better, um getting them out of the house a little bit. Um we live in Lillington and so I'm looking very forward to meeting. Um everyone, please stop by and see us. Um we do have the mask requirement, but we'd love to see. Um. It all all our parents. We miss our students. It's like an empty campus. We really miss our students and look forward to when we get to the blended instruction. Um the one thing that's gonna change this year, I wasn't here when when um it went on in March. But the one thing that's gonna change is that we're gonna meet the needs of all of our students. We're gonna have our exceptional children support actively involved, working with our teachers. We're also gonna have the gifted students, also have enrichment opportunities as well with our teachers. Um high level of engagement between teachers and student and the parents. Um one thing that we're gonna do that that is probably very unique, it's all gonna be student-centered, but it's all gonna be live instruction. So I know the past, there was a um recordings that kids could log on to to see the recordings of the different. Um aspects of the teaching, but this is gonna be live recordings. We're real excited about the opportunities that we're gonna be presenting to you all. As far as the classroom schedules and the classroom times. Um but again, it's gonna be something that is is. It's it's all directed towards student engagement. And um the way that we divide up the time is to keep the direct instruction so that the kids aren't looking at a computer for a straight hour. They'll be having direct instruction for about twenty-five to thirty minutes and then some follow-up enrichment activities, the the last part of the thirty minutes. Um also, we're gonna have consistent hu- school and home communication. Um we're gonna be actively involved in ensuring that the students are participating. As Mr. Smith said about the grading procedures and so forth. We're gonna really make sure that um we are holding our students accountable. And also providing them with the a very rigorous curriculum that's gonna be satisfying to everyone. Alright, Mr. Smith. Alright, this is a, this is a basic overview of what we're gonna look like as far as the schedule goes for remote and for blended. And our objective here is to build a strong remote um academic program. But also flow into a blended program once we welcome kids back to campus when we feel it's safe enough. Um eight o'clock to nine o'clock are teacher office hours. The teachers are available for family conferencing, for individual student conferencing. So that's something that's very unique. Um so during the remote time, the eight to nine period will be reserved for that conference time. Nine to nine fifty will be the first core block or basically the first period. Um the core subjects of humanities and so forth. Ten to ten fifty, the second core. Um course subjects, um also whatever they have their second second period. Eleven to noon, this is something that's very unique this year. Um the elective course is going to be. Um rotating electives, so seventh grade will have theirs on, I can't see the past here, but I believe it's Tuesday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Eighth grade will be on Wednesday, sixth grade will be on Thursday. So during that time, if seventh grade is with electives, the sixth and eighth graders will be able to do some enrichment. Or some one-to-one with teachers as needed, or it'll be a break time for them between eleven and noon. And then noon till one is their lunch. So basically, they're off the computer from eleven to one unless they're doing their electives. Or having small group instruction. One to one fifty is the third period, two to two fifty is the fourth period. And then from three to three thirty is the teacher office hours. So again, we will emphasize the office hours are very important. Because it gives you direct line to the teachers. Now again, the first, second, third and fourth blocks are gonna be live instruction. So it's no good, not gonna be recordings. The teachers will be presenting their instruction live. And so we wanna make sure that's one thing that's gonna be a little bit different this year. And also with the elective courses, the electives will be doing high school and middle school. And so they'll make sure they get their electives twice a week, as we'll see in the next one, I do believe. This is the kind of blended, or excuse me, the Friday schedule, excuse me. The Friday schedule, eight to nine teacher office hours, nine to nine fifty-five, seventh grade will have electives, then eighth grade. Teacher office hours, then sixth grade. So the one thing I wanna point out again is that even though seventh grade has electives. On on Friday at from nine to nine fifty-five, other kids are gonna be enrichment from s- on sixth and eighth grade students. Will be in academic enrichment and interventions. Um so and then we do the Raze curriculum with advisory teachers from two to three on Fridays, and then we'll have a dismissal. And now I'm gonna go to the blended schedule if we can do that real quickly. The next one.
No, next is uh the high school. Uh. Yeah, it's the same.
The the blended schedule is designed uh parents for when we have the remote. When they get on campus, they're also gonna have the same schedule, so they're flowing through the same um schedule for their classes.
Alright, okay, Mr. Witt, you good? Alright, great. Good evening, everyone. Uh from the bottom of my heart, I cannot tell you how much we have missed our returning families and new families. We cannot wait to welcome you into the building. Uh you know, it it's just it's a challenge for you, you know, that particularly our new families, you're not sure what to expect. And returning families, you obviously, there are some changes and so forth. But I think one of the things I really want to drive home to you. As um you know, many of us are the same faces that you had last year with your children. Um we really do have a culture of care here at Ascend Leadership Academy. And I don't think I can say that enough. Uh we're a small school um that, you know, when your child goes up a grade, they still see their other teachers in the hallways. And the teachers are saying hello to them. Mr. Perez knows a lot of the students. He's been here from the start. Uh Ms. Thompson, she sees them in the office and so forth. And now I'll have had a year in and I know many of the children as well. So just please understand that your child's well-being and success are our first priority. Um you have a story to tell. Every family has a story of what the last few months has been like for you. So as you're going to find when we have our orientation meetings, there's gonna be questions. There's gonna be a time for you all to share exactly kind of what's on your mind. What are your concerns? Um are there special things that we need to keep in mind as we move forward to best provide for you and your family? So please, please, please know that we have been very thoughtful about every single decision. There was never a, well, let's just do it this way. We really did uh take a lot of time, the committee that has been meeting weekly for several weeks now. Um to really make sure that your return is uh the very best that it possibly can be. So please know again, when you, when your family gets here, obviously, we'll all start in the remote, but when we try the blended, get that back in, you know, September fourteenth, I believe, that week. You know, there are gonna be a little, a few little things that happen here and there, but your child's well-being and safety and success has been at the forefront to everything. That we have planned. Um again, being a smaller school, you know, a lot of our peer schools are six hundred, eight hundred, fifteen hundred children. We have four hundred children here in our building and now we have two buildings, so it's going to be even more of a um a small community feel. Uh we very much pride ourselves on our personalized approach to learning. Uh we want our students to feel empowered. We're a leadership academy. So we want them to feel like they can advocate for themselves and their education. And we hope that you will joining, join us in encouraging them to do that, asking questions. And when they are online, you know, rather than just sitting passively for that ten to fifteen minutes of instruction, asking questions and just really participating and making the most of their learning. So well, we're really excited about that. And uh communication, I use the word conducive. We wanna make sure that the things we're communicating to you are helpful to you. And helping to build your child's success. Um and that you all also feel comfortable communicating with us as well. Every child will have an advisory teacher or at the high school level, we call them a homeroom teacher. That's a, you know, a smaller group of kids, twenty, twenty-two kids. That are that teacher's babies, you know, for the whole year. And just know that 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 teacher, obviously, there's gonna be humanities, science, you know, math and so forth. But the teachers also wanna be reaching out and making sure that your child is okay and has a great experience, feels empowered here. And with the addition of our guidance counselor, I can't even tell you how excited we are for you to meet Ms. Lipsy. She really wants to be a part of your child's success as well. So if there are things going on in the classroom, please know that we also have a counselor who can spend additional time with your family, with your child. And uh she's really eager to make sure that every child feels um joyful and successful here at Ascend. And uh the last bullet there, joyful engagement. And when you see me, typically, I've got a smile on my face. And if for some reason I don't, I'm probably thinking about something that's really, really, you know, kind of puzzling me at that moment. Um so I would just really want you to um to realize how important you all are to us. So many of our families in the last two to three years have come forward with various uh talents, passions, interests. And just they have really made a difference here in our community for our kids. Obviously, there's some activities that we're not going to be able to hit the ground running to do. But I encourage you to think about, you know, are there ways that you can share your expertise, perhaps as a career day speaker, a little bit later on in the year? Perhaps there's a team you might be interested in helping to coach, or maybe you'd like to be a class mom, or you know, some different opportunities and so forth. But we really want you to view not just your child's experience here, but your your family's experience. We want you to be engaged. We want you to feel like this is home to you as well. Come to the chili cook-off, come to the fall festival, when and if, you know, we have these types of events once COVID kind of moves past. The beautiful thing about things is, you know, things change and we are going to move forward. We're all in this together, so um hang in there, be patient. And just know that every decision that we've made um is with your families and our, of course, our staff's um best interest for success. And health and health and safety, okay? Alright, so let's get to the schedule. Alright, so high school level looks a little different than middle school for obvious reasons. Um when many of us parents were in school, we had six or seven class periods a day. Uh some of us were on a semester system. There were just a variety of things. And so what we took into consideration for the new schedule this year. Is we wanted our kids to have a variety of options for learning. They have a great attention span for a variety of things. Now, there's two ways to look at that, of course. So we do have our students registered for eight classes. Five of those classes are core classes. Families who are returning to us know that that fifth class, other than the science, math and social studies. Is digital media. We feel like that gives our kids a huge um kind of like advantage in this world because it's increasingly tech-based. We had a wonderful uh tech expo this past February. Ms. Boyo's eighth graders did a phenomenal job with that. So um so you do have your five core classes, but we also have three electives where the kids can really branch out and, you know, get started on that language. Or maybe learn some principles of business, or maybe dabble in art a bit. There's just some, a lot of great options for them. So the schedule that we have planned um is intended to help them to build relationships with teachers. They won't switch up in January and have a whole completely different group of teachers. They'll actually start with the same eight teachers that they'll have through the month of June when they, you know, continue through the year. So um taking all that into consideration, we also didn't wanna overwhelm them and have them attending eight classes a day. Do you remember how tired we were by the time we got to three o'clock? We know that that's not the best way to reach the kids. So what you're gonna see here in front of you is um as the middle school, eight tonight are those teacher office hours. We really encourage your kiddos and you as parents to reach out, you know, shoot that email to the teacher, or you know, if there's a Google Hangout, whatever the teacher is able to communicate with you. Please use that time. Teachers love to help. We've chosen this profession to be of service, to help and to advance your child's education. So you know, please, and and also be patient too, I would ask. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But um you know, teachers have chosen this profession because they love kids, they love learning, and they're going to do everything they can to support you. But you, we don't want you suffering in silence, so use those office hours um to the very best of your ability. So as we go into the nine o'clock, that is the first block. And the reason why you see A and B is that students will take four of their classes on Monday. They'll get their second four classes on Wednesday. So every day that they come, they're not taking all eight of their classes. It's kind of like when you and I were in college and we did the Monday, Wednesday, Friday and the Tuesday, Thursday. It looks similar to that. So first block A and then first block B for those other days, as you see in that third column. Ten to ten fifty, second block A, second block B. Eleven to noon, we give the kids a breather. Obviously, you know, think about the last time you sat in front of the computer for two hours. We're approaching forty-five minutes now, and I'm sure some of you are getting a little antsy, right? So eleven o'clock, we'll have some small group instruction, teacher office hours as needed. Those items will be communicated to you. Lunch break, take a break, take a breather, step away from the computer, come back at one o'clock for your third block of instruction. Two to two fifty, your fourth block, and then we end our day at three o'clock with our teacher office hours. That's your Monday through Thursday schedule. Okay, Friday, we're really excited about because they want, it's gonna give us a chance to do some things that we don't always have time for at the high school level. So again, eight to nine, we start our day with those teacher office hours. But then take a look here, nine to ten, we'll have some opportunities for math and science assessment. Perhaps a quick quiz, some academic enrichment. We're gonna do some follow-up for students who had maybe some struggles with some concepts through the week. It's a great use of that time. And the reason why we broke it up in math and science, we didn't want a student to be overwhelmed with four different expectations from those eight classes. So again, your student should only be enrolled in one math and one science. So that hour will be did, will be devoted to math and science. And then if you look at ten and eleven, you've got your humanities assessment. That will be your social studies as well as your English class, okay? And remediation, so on and so forth. Eleven to noon, again, more opportunity for remediation, teacher office hours, lunch break at eleven. And uh one of the things that I'm really excited about is at one o'clock on Fridays through the first quarter, we're going to um take a break. And really drill down on our Raze curriculum. Those of you who are returning families know that Raze is the core of our character education program. We are very much, you know, that love comes with a price, folks. And because we love your kids, we also know that there has to be some character building. You guys are doing a great job with it as mom and dad, but we also know that there are some things that we can do to support that. So respect, accountability, integrity, service, excellence. Those are all core um aspects of what we do here with our kids. And what we want them to also demonstrate. So the curriculum we've chosen this year is Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. It's actually his son Sean's work. And we just met today. We had a handful of teachers come on campus. And they are working so hard to provide engaging and exciting opportunities for our kids to learn all about what it means to be proactive. Begin with the end in mind, synergize, think win-win. These are beautiful tools that I think, you know, they're gonna come home and start, you know, using these things, uh these terms with you. And I hope that you will follow up and have great conversations with your kids, because it's not just about the math and the science, which we all know is extremely important. But we also want your students to have skills to help them navigate the very situation that we've all been put into these last few months. Um having some skills and some habits that really help us to make the most of these types of situations, I think that's a great gift. So again, you hear me going on about it, but you'll be looking forward to having that. And please encourage your kids to get involved and to engage and make the most of it. We really appreciate it. And then finally, you see that two to three o'clock slot on Friday afternoon, additional remediation, academic enrichment activities as needed. So a student who is, you know, struggling, that's another time where they'll be able to pull the, pull their children in and get some additional support. So looking forward to your questions. More information is coming, um but we're really excited about what we've developed. And uh we really feel like your children can thrive in this environment. So excited about high school, you know, it's a very special time and it will fly by. My son just graduated from high school and it's a, it, believe me, I am as a, as a parent of two high school students. I am very much um keen on how important the time is and we will make sure that um your child's uh success is is our forefront, is our priority here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jett. Uh and just to reiterate, yes, the, the daily schedule is set up that way. Um you know, we'll definitely take some questions about that later on if you have some. But again, the idea is in remote and in blended, the schedule is the same. Um and we can easily move in between remote and blended learning, um depending on what is required of us. Uh and nobody suffers or nobody gets lesser because they're all getting essentially the same thing, same features, same instructions. Um same access to, you know, to the teacher um is how we have it set up. So very quickly, and we have, and we were limited on time here, and a lot of these things you know already. Um but I did wanna let you know, we are obviously going to maintain all of these standards and and safety standards and protocols. Uh mandated by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and also North Carolina's Health and Human Services. So they've given us a variety of documents with an extensive amount of information re- regarding this. Um and and we definitely are using those things. Um and that's why Mr. Perez is here. He's, it's kind of what he's in charge of to to kind of guide us through. This part um uh uh of of the uh of coming back to school, but we're definitely gonna take it seriously. As you know, all students are gonna be required to wear face coverings. Um and and we're we're definitely gonna uphold that. Uh there are some exceptions uh that we can discuss uh that are in the documentation. Uh we're gonna wash and sanitize uh frequently in the classroom. Um and then wash hands, hand sanitizer a lot. Uh I told you how the classrooms are gonna be set up with six feet of distancing. Um our goal is to keep students in cohorts. So like in middle school, uh the students will essentially stay in one or two classrooms. Uh throughout the the whole day with the same cohort of students and teachers will likely uh move uh to the different classrooms to accommodate them. Um to try to keep groups of students together, uh to 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 limit exposure. Uh all students and staff will obviously be checked upon entering the bus. Um the, you know, coming in the building from car line, I think we're gonna try to get in before they even get out the car. Um and then ask them a series of questions, check the temperatures to make sure that everybody is i- is safe. Um non-essential visitors will not be allowed on campus. Uh we have a system in place for, you know, if you're dropping off or signing out your students or dropping off lunch. Um uh sorry, but we're not allowing uh people to enter the, enter the building. Uh we'll have a a procedure in place for you to do it uh outside in a in a secure place or 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 in the lobby. Um in a secure area to where that you don't come in to um for possible exposure as well. Uh students will uh eat, continue to eat in their classrooms like as we always have and will visit restrooms on a schedule. And we'll monitor and supervise to make sure that students are not congregating in the bathroom and and, you know, interacting with each other in that way. Um like I said before, we were, we hired a professional cleaning company uh that's gonna clean daily. Um and and they're gonna come in the nighttime and and clean uh every night and make sure that everything is cleaned and sanitized. Uh it's not ALA staff, it's a company. Uh we figured that this, it was doubt important that we needed to make sure that we uh invested in 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 a company that does this professionally. Um and also, staff is gonna have certain procedures to clean, you know, when students are at their desk or or, you know, in high-touch areas. We're gonna continually continuously clean those areas. Uh we do uh encourage students to clean their own area. If they wanna bring their own supplies, wipes, or whatever it may be, uh but we'll also have our own procedures uh at the end of the day and throughout the day to to sanitize uh and clean. Uh each classroom will have individual desks, like I said, no tables for easy cleaning and to promote social distancing. So the traditional desk-chair combo uh desk that we have will be in all the classrooms. Uh we won't utilize any of the tables that we have, and we have a lot of them. Um and materials shared by by students will be sanitized frequently. We're gonna try to limit that as much as possible. Uh and I, we definitely encourage you to provide your student with their own material so that they don't have to share and pass things back and forth. Um so uh supply list just went on the website, I think, yesterday. Uh so you can look at those and and make sure that each student has their own individual supplies. We're gonna very much discourage uh from sharing. And and students, you know, using each other's supplies. Transportation is a big key. I did send out a. Um a survey about this. We do plan to have buses. I did send out a, um, a survey about this, we do plan to have buses. Um, we know that there are limitations on, on the number of students who can be on the bus, so I will say, um, that our buses are going to look a lot different. Everybody, we don't have the, the resources to provide it to everybody who needs it like we have in the past, that will not be the option for us, uh, we'll tell you that. Uh, I'm going to send out a application for bus transportation probably at the end of this week, um, and then we'll see what the applications look like, uh, and then, and then respond accordingly, but I will say that buses will look differently this year. We're going to try our best, we know that it's a need, but, but buses this year, at least at the beginning of the year, are going to be for people who have the highest need. Um, and it's a legit, like a, a significant barrier to their child's instruction. Um, and, and, and it's unfortunate that we have to do that, but since there's only one per seat, that's about twenty-two students, uh, per bus, uh, we currently have, uh, four buses, um, and we'll look to, to run, uh, at least two of them, um, during the, during the initial, uh, initial part of the school year. And face coverings will be required at all times on the buses, uh, there's no time if they can take them off on the bus. Uh, we'll only use community stops, no, uh, road stops, uh, community stops will be like in parking lots, in neighborhoods, um, in, in other areas where we can stop, the driver can check temperatures, um, and, and ensure that, that all the students are safe to get on, um, and then we will ask that parents, you know, be around so that if, you know, there are symptoms that a student are, is showing, that they're, someone is able to come and, and, um, take them home, uh, so that they, they, uh, won't be able to go to school, uh, with a temperature over one hundred point four. Um, and bus transportation will be limited, and it's for those with high needs, as I said, and we're going to require you to register for sure, one hundred percent. If you do not register, you will not be allowed on the bus. Um, that was something we were going to do anyway this year, but even more so with the new, uh, procedures, uh, we will have to do that, and then we're also going to add applications to that process. So you'll have an application, and then you'll have to, uh, confirm your spot once you, you receive that spot. Uh, so that's another factor that will go into our cohort groupings, uh, so definitely transportation is a thing that you'll need to complete that application, uh, when it comes out later this week. All right, a lot of questions, uh, were about, uh, if there is a case, what will happen? Uh, and actually, this is given to us by North Carolina Health and Human Services and DPI. Um, it's not really much that we can do to change it, it's, it's what they've given us. Um, and as, you know, it's, it's relevant and, and it makes sense, uh, and it's what we'll do. So if it does happen, um, in the event that it does happen, that there is someone who is, has reported COVID nineteen, having COVID nineteen or being diagnosed with it, or has symptoms of it, um, there is procedures for that, it's all in that guidance document, hopefully you've seen that, that I've shared, um, with you in, in various emails, it has all this in there. Um, but first I will say that we'll have a sick room, uh, if a kid show, a student starts showing symptoms, or a staff member starts showing symptoms, we'll have separate rooms that are specifically for this, um, in both buildings, where that will be supervised, that obviously will call home, student will need to go home, uh, but they'll be isolated until that happens, uh, but then obviously, once they leave, it'll be sanitized. Uh, we have gowns and face shields and, and a number of masks for our staff members that would interact with, with the students. Um, you know, we, we're going to try to do screenings and, and symptom checks to, to prevent that from happening, but it, you know, inevitably, if it does, then, then that's what we'll do. Uh, students and staff who have been diagnosed or have symptoms, uh, will be required to quarantine. So if you're positive for, for COVID, then you cannot come to attend school on campus, uh, for ten days, um, from the first positive test, uh, is the, is the recommendation. And then if you're exposed to someone who has been diagnosed, uh, with COVID nineteen and exposure, and if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Perez, you can correct me, is if you're in, uh, close contact with someone for more than fifteen minutes and you're within six feet, uh, without a mask, um, would be considered exposure, um, then, you know, that would be fourteen days, and usually that's going to be, you know, if you're in close contact, if you're, you know, for a significant amount of time. So fourteen days required to be out of school, um, to make sure that you do not develop symptoms or develop, or, or are diagnosed with, with, with the, with the virus. Um, if you have one or more symptoms, that includes fever, chills, shortness of breath, new cough, or a loss of smell, cannot attend school, um, and then obviously you, I would hope that you would get, get checked out or, or determine what the, what the problem is. If you're positive, then you obviously have to stay out for ten days. If you're negative for COVID nineteen, then you have to twenty-four hours of no fever or symptoms, and then you can return, as long as those, as long as that's, you know, without medicine. If there's a separate diagnosis, like stomach virus or infection, then, uh, you follow the, the regular well-child policy, which includes a no symptoms for twenty-four hours, um, and ideally you would have some kind of doctor's, uh, note of some sort, uh, for a particular, uh, diagnosis, um, that you could share with us, that we can ensure that all students are safe. I will say that we're all in this together, I mean, I think everybody wants to be safe, uh, staff, students, you know, all stakeholders, you know, we all have to take responsibility of, of doing the right thing. If a staff member is showing symptoms, we're going to, uh, you know, encourage them to stay at home, um, and have things in place to, to cover that, uh, because safety and health are, are, are priority, um, in, in this. Um, and we're getting there, goodness. Athletics and extracurricular activities, uh, they're on hold right now, to be honest with you, they're on pause. Um, you, you know, I think a lot of us are trying to figure out how to do school, essentially, and then once we get that figured out, uh, athletics and extracurriculars will, will come back. Uh, right now, I know the North Carolina High School Athletic Association is saying September first is, 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 what is on pause until, and then they'll make another assessment. Uh, we're following that. Uh, our hope is to resume winter sports, you know, NBA basketball cheerleading, um, you know, and I think, uh, sportsman team is, is in, in, in the winter also. Uh, so our hope is that, you know, fall sports, it's, you know, it's not looking that great, it's looking kind of bleak for fall sports right now, I'll be completely honest, uh, but if, if things change and, and, and the, and, you know, the, the status quo is different, um, then, you know, we may look to, to provide that in a shortened season or, or, or in a, in a simplified format, um, because obviously we can't start until September, that's going to push everything back. Um, usually the, the fall season is over by early October. Um, so, yeah, that's where we are with athletics, extracurriculars, same deal, uh, we'll try to do virtual clubs, once we get virtual, uh, school, remote school going and blended learning going, uh, we want to give kids opportunities to interact in a, in a non-academic environment. Um, so, uh, virtual clubs, athletic, you know, virtual athletic training workouts, uh, if we could potentially do something like that to give kids the same opportunities or the same experiences, we're going to try to incorporate those. Um, we are looking to provide aftercare program at a reduced cost, um, in lieu of reduced bus transportation, uh, and I think we're looking to try to do that at a nominal fee for parents, i- if a fee at all, if we can work it out to where we can do it, uh, without pushing that cost to parents, because we know there's a burden to that, and we're going to try to do that. That just depends on how many students and, and things like that. Um, and then we're going to look, look to be creative to provide social opportunities, because I know that's a factor, like with remote learning, kids need to be, be around other kids and see one another and interact, the social aspect of school was a huge piece, all of us recognize that and, and, and understand that, so we're going to try to still provide those opportunities, um, in a safe way, uh, where we can. All right, I did it, or we did it in an hour. Um, uh, we got to the end here, we're ready for questions, and I'm going to stop sharing, but I will leave this slide up for a little bit, uh, and all of our contact information is there for myself, Mr. Witt and Dr. Jet. Um, and then also, I'm going to share the, the PDF of this slideshow on the website, um, so that you can access that. We do have a COVID nineteen resources page on our website, um, and it has all the communications that I've sent out, all the, uh, guidance documents, um, and we'll continue to do that throughout. Once we get up and going, it'll have helpline links, it'll have contact numbers, it'll have a number of different things, uh, ways that you can communicate, uh, it'll have a breakdown of what the daily schedule is, you know, things like that, uh, links to different resources, instructional resources, how to get the Canvas, how to get the IXL, and so on and so forth. Um, so there's our contact information, resources will be linked in the PDF that we share, um, and that's our presentation. Obviously, we wanted to get, we did a lot, we wanted to get the nuts and bolts, and I know that there's other things that we, we, we could cover and that we will, uh, but that'll come in the future. Um, but now we'll take questions, and I'm going to actually stop sharing my screen, and, uh, and we'll go to Ashley, and we'll see if there are any questions that have been gathered for the whole team to, to discuss.
Okay, so we do have a couple of questions. Um, one person asked if North Carolina has suspended the first and third quarter standardized testing, um, and how will this affect funding for additional academic options?
So, so testing you asked about?
Mm-hmm.
First of quarter, no, so, as of right now, because testing is, is legislative, right? So the General Assembly would have to either, um, like in the spring, they, they passed a waiver for, for testing, um, and they, they requested a waiver from actually the federal government for, for us not to do testing. So in order for us not to have testing this school year, um, then that same, that same situation would have to apply from everything that I've heard, that is not the plan, we're planning to have all testing, um, and we plan to do, you know, check-ins, and see check-ins where we can, um, and then obviously at the end of the year, if we're still in this situation, uh, we would have to figure out how to do, uh, end of grade and course tests. Fortunately for us, all of our tests are year-long, um, so they would all be in the spring, um, and hopefully, you know, everything will be, uh, back to normal or as normal as things could be by then, um, in order for us to, to do that. I don't know if I answered the question, but, uh, uh, I hope I did. There was another part of it, go ahead.
Actually, you can look on the, uh, NCDPI Division of Accountability Services, and they have a listing of, well, sorry, I've been approved by the NCDPI for testing this year.
Yeah, yeah, so unless that changes, yes, all testing will still occur, will still be accountable. Um, as far as the funding, I, I, yeah, I don't know that it'll affect that, that, us that much, um, uh, from that aspect.
Uh, next thing, Canvas, is it going to show grades? Are the parents going to be, go in there and see the grades like they would any other?
Yes, that's a good question, and another thing, and I'm glad that you asked that, another thing, and Principal, you can jump in after I, I finish here, but another thing about Canvas is, and that we heard from the data from, from the, the surveys of the spring was that we needed one, a one-stop shop, you know, and, and definitely, I definitely get that as a parent, it seemed like, uh, parents had to go all over the place, had to go to Power School, and then go to Google Classroom, and then go to IXL, and then go here. So Canvas is a one-stop shop, you'll get one login, you'll be able to go and see grades, you'll be able to see the feedback from the teacher, you'll be able to see due dates, it has a calendar feature, you can see everything, um, that's coming up, you know, what, what each teacher is planning in each class, uh, you can go to your student's calendar or, or in your account and see your child's calendar and say, okay, today's Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, right? Yeah, um, and all of these things are what their, what their child is doing. Um, so, yeah, so it's a one-stop shop in that sense, um, and, and you'll be able to see grades in there, it, it syncs with Power School, um, so, yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the idea.
Um, devices, if students want to use their own device, that is fine, correct? They'll just have to sign a form that they're using it?
Yes, so, obviously, students who are in remote instruction, I mean, I, I mean, that, that are full and full remote, then yes, um, use your own device, uh, at home, for sure, you definitely have the opportunity to have, um, one of ours, because we have one for every student, uh, but if you feel more comfortable with yours, you can still access all the same things. That's, that's the big key about it, if you can access the apps and the programs, which usually you can, uh, because most of them are, are, are web-based, um, so I would say yes, I mean, we, I know our teachers like for all of our students to have the same device, uh, when they're on campus, um, so once they come on campus, you know, we would probably ask them to use, uh, the, the device that we have in some instances. Um, it's a little bit easier to manage our students too, because we can supervise what they're doing, um, on our devices, but when they have their own and they're on campus, it's a little bit more difficult. Obviously, if they're at home doing instruction, you know, there, there's not much, you know, supervision we can do with, with what they're doing on, on their computer, but in that aspect, um, so, so I kind of answered that, yeah.
Will the students be able to remove masks when they are seated and distanced, or during physical activities such as gym class?
Yeah, so, and Mr. Perez, you can jump in here if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but the way that it reads is that it's, you know, they have to have face coverings on, and we need to make sure we say face coverings, because that's the distinction that is in the documentation. Um, whenever they are, can't be with, whenever they cannot distance with, within six feet, or six, they can't distance for six feet. Um, so potentially, if they're in the classroom, in their desk, everybody's sitting in their desk, um, six feet apart, then potentially they would have the opportunity to take their mask off in that scenario. Um, you know, but when they go to the bathrooms, when they're, you know, walking around the classroom, when they're walking around the hallways, the mask would be required to be on anytime that they could come within six feet of somebody else. Obviously, when they're outside recess and they can distance, we're going, we thought it, we've talked about activities they could do, walking, uh, sitting six feet and like chair, like, you know, outdoor chairs, that they can still talk and interact in a, in a safe distance, um...
Thank you for physical education, yeah, thank you for physical education. Uh, we're going to try to maintain the distances so, so that they're at least six feet, um, they're not going to be required to wear masks, um, and as Mr. Smith was saying, is in the classroom setting, as long as we can maintain that at least six feet, um, the teachers will be instructed to try to provide at least some breaks, um, and so that they're not wearing masks.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, and Mr. Perez is right, so, and we, we've talked about that, um, I mean, it's hard for us to, to do it all day, um, we're doing it at school now, so, um, yeah, so we're going to be, uh, uh, smart and intentional about that and, and try to find times where they, we can give them a break from that, but while we're still being safe and distant. This is good.
Um, so there is a technology fee, and it is the same for the high school and the middle school, it's forty dollars?
Yes, um, yeah, and there's potential that, you know, that that might be different this year, um, due to the circumstances, uh, so, uh, and we'll, we'll have more information about that coming in the future, so, we're going to entertain the burden of that, so...
iPad is used.
Which type?
Is it like an iPad two?
Yeah, fifth generation.
Yeah.
So it's an Air, I think, iPad Air.
Hmm. Single parent works full-time, will try her best or his best to make sure that the child is logged on into class, will this type of situation be taken into consideration?
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll offer support, you know, if it needs to be after those hours, I think our teachers are going to be really flexible as far as meeting those needs.
Right, and, and, and I'll let the principal talk about it too, but yes, I mean, and we also have things in place, you know, with our communication, and I think Mr. Witt talked a little bit about that, um, to where, you know, if there is a struggle, if there is some, some significant barriers to your child receiving instruction, um, then we're going to, we're going to try some interventions, I mean, you know, and try some different things to ensure that they're engaged. Um, you know, we have a whole list, a chart, uh, that we'll go through, uh, start with calls and emails, and then it'll escalate to, to a little bit more, not a punitive thing, but more of a, hey, this child is not performing, they're not engaged, as a school, like they, like if they were on campus, it's our responsibility, what are we going to do, um, to ensure that they, they are successful or, or meet their potential as much as possible? I don't know if anybody wants to, to add to that, but that's, that's my answer. So yes, I mean, we definitely understand...
I would say, uh, I'll say just as a teacher, uh, and speaking about the teacher on that last quarter, uh, the most important thing is that if you are having a challenger, if the, if the student has a situation that occurs, just, just get with the teacher as soon as you possibly can, uh, we can certainly make accommodations, we can be understanding, we just, you know, have to be in the loop, uh, so I would, I would encourage if anyone is, is having any kind of difficulties, please just get with the teacher, and we will do our best to accommodate.
Yeah, and to add to that, that's one of the reasons why our orientation conferences are so important and valuable to us, because we need to hear from you, we know that every family's got a different situation, and so please make sure that you get signed up for your conference, you can do it virtually if you're more comfortable, or you can come to the building, that's an option that you have, but please, you know, don't sit on that type of information, let us know what's going on, and we will do our very best to work with you, okay?
Great point.
Uh, next question, how are students recognized as an accelerated learner? Is it on past AIG status?
Uh, yeah, so I mean, I, I mean, AIG is a part of it, I think classroom performance is a part of it, um, and then, you know, you know, standardized test scores... And then, you know, you know, standardized test scores, we use a lot of different things to, to do that. I think that's, you know, just a skill that our teachers have, you know, because you could be accelerated in math, but not in, you know, English. So, class by class, you know, it's our teacher's responsibility to differentiate for, for our students as much as we can to their individual needs. So, yeah, we would identify those students who might need a little bit more, and, and like Mr. Witt talked about during those times of enrichment, we could, you know, give them a little bit more, because it's a scheduled time for those type of things. And then on the other end of that, you know, we would have time for students who might need a little bit more remediation, need more, need more help to get on grade level. So that, that, that's where that comes from, yeah, there's no set objective standard.
And I would add, at the high school level, we have honors classes for almost every option of class that you can take, you know, with the core classes, so please consider signing up for honors classes, you get into class that first day, or you read the syllabus, and you're like, hey, I think I can push myself a little bit more. Mom and dad, you want your kids to push a little bit, please consider those honors classes, because that will definitely give you, we think, what you're looking for in terms of acceleration.
And at the middle school level, I wanted to emphasize that every year is a brand-new year for kids. So when they, everyone blossoms differently, so if you have a child that's accelerated in reading, or math, or something, it's always good to have that communication with the teachers, or communicate with me, any type of thoughts you may have, so that we can definitely put them on our radar to ensure, so it's not just past performance that we look at, but it's also the current performance that we look at as well.
Well, classes recorded, last year we had two kids with remote learning, and at times it was very glitchy with our internet.
Yes, so they will be recorded, I think, yeah, well, Mr., we were talking about before, we had some classes that were all recorded, and that was it, there was no physical interaction, I think it's important, what we learned from the spring was that that physical, well, not physical, that, that face-to-face virtual interaction was super important for, for students. So we'll have that, and then I think we're gonna encourage our, our teachers to record those lessons.
And then try to post them. The ones that request it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's a lot on a daily basis, if I'm being honest, for every class. But, you know, potentially, maybe some of the more important parts, maybe like the, you know, the direct instruction part. But maybe not the collaborative activity, because some of the, some of the lessons will be just basically the teacher being there when the students are working on assignments in their campus. Or doing a collaborative activity, whether it's having a seminar or discussion, kind of like what we're doing right now.
And someone asked about orientation or training materials for Canvas, and Dr. Jet responded that yes, we absolutely will provide some video clips and some, and support for that.
Yeah, that's the, the goal for that week is to give you everything you need, so then August 24th, we hit the ground running, and, and everybody's clear on what their expectations are, there's no kind of, you know, stalemate, or, or, or like inconsistencies in, in, in the quality of instruction that's delivered.
In our A and B cohorts or groups, they're gonna be determined by last name, correct?
Yeah, potentially, yeah, that, that's the goal, I mean, there's other factors like buses, and, you know, some other things, you know, siblings. I mean, I know we've already heard from some people who, like my son, my child would ride with this family, because that's how we carpool, and, you know, we take some of those things into consideration. You know, but ultimately, I think the base structure would be by last name, is what we're planning to do.
Free and reduced lunch, do I apply for that through Lee County? No, you do not, we will send out a form that is from us with the same qualifications that the counties describe, but it's different. We do not participate in the national, yeah, other schools use. And another question was, if they do receive free and reduced lunch on the days that they are not in school, how will lunch be provided? I don't know that that's gonna be something that we would, unless it's a individual.
Yeah, and, and, and we've talked about, I mean, it won't be as like a traditional setting. I mean, I think what we'll do is take the data and, and applications that, that Ashley was talking about, identify our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and then, you know, provide care packages, so to speak, maybe like once a week, that we can send home. It, it's kind of what we've talked about, but you know, we're going to need everybody's help in that. I know our Community Involvement Alliance is going to be involved with that, and maybe do, doing a drive for some of these things, collecting some of these items, so that we can get, you know, some, some of those resources together, so that we can put some of these packages together. I mean, yeah, we, go ahead.
Parents out there that are interested in helping with that, and being a resource, or you know a way to gather some things, reach out to me, because we are putting together a committee, and we will start meeting and getting plans, and trying to execute them before the start of the school year. My email address is in the chat, but if you can't find it there, then you can just look up on the website, it's at Thompson@ALA Schools NC.
Dot org.
Dot org, yeah.
Are we got more?
Uh, if a child chooses remote learning, do they simply log into the classroom the same as the kids on the B schedule? The curriculum will be identical, same tests, and et cetera?
That's right. That's right, so, yeah, so basically, if you're on campus, you have the same schedule as people who are at home. So like the eight to nine office hours will still be the same, the kids who are on campus from eight to nine will just have access to their teachers. They'll be working on their, their, their modules and Canvas, they'll be able to ask in questions, get individual help when they're on campus from eight to nine. And the teacher will also obviously be available for any questions, emails, calls during that time. And then they go right into the nine to three schedule with the fifty minutes for each class, whether they're on campus, at home, or full remote.
If. Had several people ask about uniforms, and if it's required for them to wear them on virtual days. Uh, Dr. Jet did answer, students are not required to be in uniform on virtual days, but we ask that they be dressed for public display. Were decisions made as far as our dress code for the?
Yeah, we're, we're talking about maybe relax, relaxing, when we go back to blended slightly, to just worrying about the top colors, but you know, that would be a, you know, board decision, but I, I plan to, to make that recommendation to them, to where, you know, the top colors would be the navy, the white, the gray, whatever it may be. But then the, you know, bottoms could be, you know, less stringent with that, but obviously appropriate.
There's a, and there's a safety component to that, moms and dads, I mean, I know you wonder, gosh knows, uniforms, not everybody has them, but it's really nice to be able to look down the hallway and very quickly see the students in four different colors, because you can quickly pick out someone who's not fitting in with that scheme, so that's one of the reasons too. So thank you for bearing that in mind as we talk about uniform stuff, it really, it's, it's a safety piece too.
Okay, uh, we did have a parent ask, is there a meeting time scheduled for online-only students? So I just want to make sure. The answer to that question is, this has been recorded, so it's gonna be displayed on our website, hopefully within the next hour. If you have additional questions after you watch it, feel free to reach out to any of us, and we can answer any of those questions. And I think that's it. Last minute questions?
Yeah.
Lunch program?
Yeah. So that's something, I, I think those of you who are concerned about lunch, that's something that we can, we can do. I mean, I think that's, you know, it's, it's different, but how, how we do it is different though, and I think everybody needs to understand that. I mean, even in regular, traditional schools, it's different how we do it, we don't have a cafeteria, we don't have.
How that's not something that we have funding for, that it's something that we.
It's true.
Or is just a.
Yeah, it's true, uh, as a charter, we don't receive funding for a lot of, you know, things, you know, transportation is one, free and reduced lunch is one, but we're, we're kind of required to figure it out, but the good news is that we're smaller, and it's, you know, scale-wise, it's, we could, we could be more creative. So I think individually, I would reach out to Ashley, Ashley kind of coordinates that aspect of, of, of our school. And if you have that concern, we don't want our students to, to not have food, you know, or, or, or that be, you know, one of the barriers to them receiving instruction. And we'll find a way to kind of make that work now, it might not be looked as traditional as, as other places. But, but we try to be creative, we, we, we've done things like the packages, we've collected items and sent them home. You know, we have to be cost-effective, as you know. But yeah, but yeah, I, I would say talk to Ashley, or send something to me, we, we'll get it done. And, and, because we've done that, we did that in the spring for some families. But yeah, we don't want that to be a barrier. Yeah, we talked about hotspots too.
Hotspots, yeah.
So same is true, same is true for hotspots and internet access, we do have some. You know, it's gonna be an application situation, we don't have enough for everybody, obviously. But we do have some for our students that are in dire need, don't have any internet access. They're like T-Mobile hotspots, so, you know, wherever you get service from T-Mobile, they'll work. So, you know, we'll have an application that comes out for that also. And then we'll make determinations based on, on, on the need for those, and if you need that, then that is an option. Again, we're trying to eliminate all the barriers for students receiving education.
Drop-off times, once Blended starts, it's gonna be the same as it was before? Seven thirty, school will begin at eight, ten?
Yeah, yes, it's, it's, uh, still, it's still seven thirty. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we, we probably need to look at that, and that's what it is right now. And we'll probably have to, kind of like how we did, usually do is work out a system, if kids are dropped off that early, where they would go, and how we could distance them still, it could be, you know, a gym situation in a rotating basis. But yeah, school would start at eight, under, under remote and blended, with the, with the, with, with the teacher office hours. All right, so the office hours start at eight, but the actual class doesn't start until nine. So potentially, if you didn't want to drop off until, I don't know, eight forty-five, or, I mean, nine was when the trolley bell would ring, that's when class would start. You know, but if, you know, we understand that, you know, I need to go to work, or, or, you know, when I need to drop kids off. I think our plan was to keep it, kind of like traditional school, our teachers would be on-site from seven thirty to three thirty, and then we would have something in place, and from eight to nine, they would have their office hours.
Yes, that is confusing, Heather, hopefully that kind of spot for you. The requirements that need to be met for bus transportation. I mean, if you're a parent that works and you have to get to work at a time that is, just doesn't.
Yeah.
Drop-off times, that's.
I mean, I, I, I will say this is that the, the family income data collection form will be a part of that application. I'm not saying that that's going to be the, the determining factor, income. But we are gonna consider those, you know, that, that need it the most in that aspect. My hope is that, you know, we could figure it out, especially if we're on A-day, B-day schedule, we, because if we do two buses, that's, you know, forty-four kids, and then over two days, that's eighty-eight, that we could get at least that many kids served with the bus. You know, but, yeah, we'll, we'll have to see what the applications come in, what, what we can do there. There's no objective criteria for it at this point. You have the opportunity to kind of explain your need, we know a lot of the families, and we'll go through them and, and make some determinations, I mean, yeah, uh, it's not the most ideal, but it is what it is, so we, we only have so many buses, we can only put so many on, and the demand out, 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 you know, exceeds the supply, so some decisions will have to be made.
Okay, uh, my kids are car riders, if there's someone near me, I would be able to help with transportation. Yeah, that's something else that we can probably do, if we have some parents that would like to carpool. I don't know that we could directly facilitate that, but if a parent kind of took the ownership of organizing it, that's definitely something you can do, and that would be helpful.
Yeah, I know other schools are doing like pods, or, or systems to where, you know, not schools, but maybe like their PTO, or their, their, their parent organizations are kind of organizing that, you know, obviously, we can't promote that, we can't promote that as a school, because we're promoting distancing, but you as a parent, if you feel comfortable with certain families, and want to coordinate with them, then, you know.
Some have asked too about parents helping, um, we have one of our subs that said, you know, could subs be considered to help with some of the kids that need support with their, you know, daily academic issues? And I think that that's something else, that if one of our families took the initiative to start doing that, then that would be a great idea.
It's gonna take the whole community to make this work, so yeah, we're definitely gonna, I mean, that's how we u- usually operate anyway, but even more so with this.
Can you explain why we would not run all four buses each day?
Yeah, so, um, you know, some of it is, is due to our drivers, we have some that are, are in that population of, of being at risk. You know, and, and keeping them safe. I'm not saying one way or the other where we are on that right now, we're, we're gonna get the applications in and see. You know, I think some of it is, is cost of running them for, for the amount, I mean, we have to look at that, I, I know that sounds bad, but from a business perspective.
Another thing that we don't receive funding for, and I don't know if everyone understands that.
Yeah, I mean, from a business perspective, running that many for, you know, we're not, are definitely not gonna run enough buses with like ten kids, or, or eleven, or, or, or something like that. We'll look at the applications, see what the need is, and make a determination. You know, but I, so I'm not saying no, but I'm not saying, saying yes either to, to that at this point, yeah.
When will we know, A, if we get on the bus, and B, which group they're in to figure out transportation?
Yeah. So what's gonna happen is the application's gonna go out this week, probably at the end of this week, towards Thursday or Friday. You'll be able to apply, we'll get, it'll ask you for your address, we'll plot the addresses, and then we'll, we'll make the stops. And then, once that happens, and we're saying, hey, Ashley Thompson, you're on the bus, you'll choose your stop. And then you'll have to confirm your registration for that stop. And then we'll, we'll, we'll do that, and if you don't confirm, and you don't register, then you won't be able to ride the bus, I can't reiterate that enough. Uh, because we need to know who's on the bus, so that we can guarantee their seat, and then we need to know if siblings are on, so that we can put them together. And then once we have that, those groups, and we split them up, we'll put them in cohorts. If, if it lines up to where it's A to L or whatever on the bus, and we can split them up safely that way, then we'll keep it that way. If not, then we'll make the two cohorts, starting with the, the students on the bus, uh, as, as the first students who we separate, and then go from there, based on the numbers that we can safely have in the building. You know, so we, we're still, we're a month out from school, or, well, a little bit under a month out from the first day. And, and I promise you, all those things will be, will be sorted out, but that's the, the gist of how it's going to work. Starts with the application, we gotta, once that comes out, you have to, have to get that done, so we get, we, we, we know. All right, we're at an hour and a half, uh, you know, I think that we hit a lot of things. Definitely gonna continue to try to communicate, and, and make sure that we get information out to you families. This is gonna be recorded, and we're going to put it on the website. Again, if you have any questions that come up, you have our contact information. Again, you know, I appreciate your patience and everything, this is new to everybody, but hopefully you feel a little bit more comfortable with the plan, with more information, and, and we'll continue to disseminate information as it comes, so just be on the lookout for that.
If we do go back to normal life, we will give the opportunity for them to get on the bus and change.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, when stuff like that changes, yeah, things will change throughout the school year, and I just hope that people understand that, you know. Yeah, there's a lot of factors, so when we go back to normal, and everything's back, yeah, absolutely, we'll run buses as normal, would be my plan. And we would get as many kids here, and, and try to serve all the students who need it, as, as we, as we were going to do under traditional circumstances. All right? All right, there's nothing else, it's right at seven thirty, thanks, everybody, uh, for joining us. And I hope everybody has a great night.
Thank you, thanks, everybody, stay healthy, stay safe.
Bye.